Due to technical difficulties at 7:14 PM, I'll call the zoning board of appeal meeting to order for December 13th. We are holding our meeting over Zoom. Please be advised, both participants and attendees, that your name, image, or comments may be recorded for the record. I'll introduce the members of the zoning board. Jim?
Aye.
Jim Royer. Let's see, Denny Bartlett.
Aye.
Aye.
Virginia Zakatinsky.
Here.
Pat Jackson.
Here.
And Keith Suzie.
Here.
Okay, I'll open the hearing continuation and new for 107 Coburn Road.
Lynn?
Yes.
I just wanted to let you know that I did verify that the posting for the variance in site plan approval was, did meet the deadlines. Everything was done correctly.
Thank you. So I'll open the hearing for 107 Coburn Road for a, well, I think it's really a new special permit for a home-based contracting business. Do we have representatives of the petition in the audience?
I see Kayla Curtis. I'll promote her. That's the only, I don't see Mr. Curtis, but maybe he's using her. Would you like me to promote Kayla?
Please do.
Oh, and a phone number has their hand up. That could be Mr. Curtis. I'll promote him as well.
Let's ask Kayla if that's correct while we...
I guess I already did.
Oh, that's okay. We'll find out soon enough.
Yeah, I'm, I think you're good.
Hello?
Hello?
What we got on the phone here?
This is Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
How you doing?
Kayla, you're muted.
Oh, no.
Okay, Mr. Curtis, what we usually do is have the petitioner make a presentation to the committee explaining your special permit request, your variance request, and your site plan request. Would you care to do so, please?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, we've, we own a septic company. We've been here for 15 years. We've never had any issues with anything, anybody. There was a previous, there was a previous permit issued to us for, for two trucks and a trailer. We still only have the two trucks, a trailer. Actually, we have one additional trailer. I'm sorry. We have one additional trailer. We're just, yeah, we're, we're just looking to, 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 to keep our trucks here to run, pretty much run the business out of here. And it's just my, it's, it's our way of living. This is, this is my living. But we've been here for 15 years, never had any issues. And until, yeah, until, until we figured out that, you know, we were five years or six years late on renew, because it just totally slipped my mind. I apologize for that. But we just, we're just looking for a permit to, to run our business out of here.
Well, you do understand, in essence, you lost your special permit.
Yes.
According to the bylaw.
Yes, that's why.
You asked for a renewal. This is, in fact, a new petition. I just want to clarify something because I think there was some confusion when you said that the building inspector didn't require this of you. The building inspector only thought you were going to ask for what you had in your initial permit. This is not the case. In your initial permit, you had one employee and you had one oversized truck, not two. And I think there may have been a trailer. I think the trailer was...
Yeah, it's actually one oversized truck. It's just one oversized truck.
What's the weight on it?
Seventy-two thousand pounds.
Okay, well, I just wanted to clarify that, that, you know, no one was picking when you, the bylaw requires that you have to have renewed your permit before the five years is up, or technically you lose it. Now, what about the porta-potties?
What, what would you like to know about them?
Well, I'd like to know whether or not you're storing them on Coburn Road.
No.
So you're not going to have anything to do with the porta-potties on Coburn Road anymore?
Well, they're, they, they come in and out, the new ones. But they don't, yeah, they don't get stored here.
Well, that wasn't our understanding from the last meeting that we had. You said at any given time you could have 25 to 30 of them. And actually, I went out on Google and I could see 12 of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Being stored in your backyard.
Yeah, and, yeah, they're not permanently here.
Well, neither are your trucks. I mean, they're out working too, but I mean, if they're there anytime, they're being stored there.
Okay.
How long do you think one porta potty may stay on your property? It would have to stay for at least a day, right?
Yeah, I mean, at any given, because the winter times is where we're slow. But they, the ones that come back, the, the, well, the only ones that would actually stay here would be a new one, which would be a brand new one until they go out. Nothing else gets stored here.
Where do you store them?
In Westboro.
So you have, have no problem with this board saying that you can have no storage of porta-potties on your property, correct?
Yes, that would be okay.
Okay, let's talk about the site plan. I went by there and took a couple of pictures. And there's an awful lot of vehicles parked there.
Okay. And I mean, I, I guess I'm going to start back at the beginning from the last meeting when I started out with, with one car or two cars and three people living here. Well, that was back in 2011.
You, you said you had one employee. And as of January 1st of this year, when the census was taken in January, there are two people living at that address.
Yes, correct. There's two people, two, two, two full-time, two full-time people live here and three part-time people live here.
So it's your wife, yourself?
Nope. My wife is no longer here.
Well, she's the one that's listed in the street list. No one else is listed.
As far as what? I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
As far as being inhabitants of 107 Coburn Road.
Okay. Yeah, that.
That just goes to show it's out of date.
Yeah, well, I, I guess since that was last reported, things have changed. We're going through a divorce. I don't know what to say.
Well, I, that's your personal business.
Right, well, that's.
To say that your wife no longer lives there is sufficient.
Yes, so I got, I, I have two full-time people that live here and three, and, and three part-time people. So there's a total of five people that are in and out. And I do have a big family as well. And I, I have grandkids. I have, I have four kids. Each one of them, each one of them have vehicles. Their, their spouses, they all have vehicles. And at any given point, I mean, there's eight cars right there. I mean, I, I have three cars myself. And, you know, I, I got my brother, I got my daughter. You know, at, at any given point with, with anybody stopping in here, because I do have a lot of friends as well. But, but nothing is business-related, which, which, yeah, I mean, I, I have two trucks and, and two trailers. And, and at any given point, there could be 15, there could be, there could be 15 cars here with, with the size of my family. But it's, it's, it's not company-related, that's.
Okay, I know because I was on the board at the time your initial permit was granted, that the board did somewhat go out of its way in order to grant your permit. If you look in the definition section of our bylaw, let me just read you what a home-based contracting business is listed as. The use of a portion of an owner-occupied dwelling or of a building accessory thereto as a place for incidental work and storage in connection with an off-premises trade by a resident builder, carpenter, electrician, painter, plumber, arborist, landscape gardener, or similar contractor, where such use is clearly secondary to the use of the premises for dwelling purposes and involves no retail sales from the premises.
Which we don't.
All of our work is done off-site.
Yeah, all, all of our work is off-site. I, other than, I, I start my truck in the morning, which is in the garage. I open up my garage door, I leave the premises, I'm gone for the day. And then when I'm done with my work, I, I come back for the day and it goes in the garage. And, and, and the, you know, with the old permit, the business hours, you know, were seven to seven. So the truck, you know, if, if the truck sits outside, if, you know, if I got something else in the garage. But.
Okay, and you did, you had asked me about several things, and I know you've asked Leanne about several things. And we referred you to the bylaw. You have read, I take it, section 540? And five, I think it's 541?
Yes.
Yes.
Table of Home-Based Contracting Businesses.
Oh, yuck.
Now, there's three classifications based on lot size in 541 that allows certain vehicles and employees.
Correct.
I'm assuming you're within the 80,000 to over, 80,000 or over, but under 160,000 square feet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So you're allowed one registered vehicle, less than 26,000 pounds, gross vehicle weight, plus one trailer, less than 12,000 pounds.
Correct.
From what you're saying to me, you're asking for more than that.
I was just asking for that one other truck because the, the, the one truck that I am allowed is under, is under, yeah, I'm just asking, I'm just asking for permission for the overweight truck. Which is also garage kept.
Well, let's go to your, the list that you supplied with your permit as far as what equipment you're going to have. I think there were maybe four things listed, as I remember. Does somebody have it handy? I don't have it right here.
It was, yeah, it was the additional trailer. Which can be kept in Westboro.
Well, you do understand that if we so determined that you, it wouldn't even be able to visit the Coburn Road, correct? That all... Are you understanding that, Mr. Curtis?
Yes, ma'am.
Lynn?
Yes.
I have that list. 2021 Pike Trailer, 7,000 gross vehicle weight. 2021 Peterbilt. I don't know if that's a truck. I'm guessing a truck, 72,000 pounds.
Yes, that was.
2022 Chevy Silverado, gross vehicle weight of 19,500. And 2007 trailer with a gross vehicle weight of 7,000.
So we're talking about two trucks and two trailers? Is that correct?
That's correct. If possible.
Well, and your previous permit allowed you one vehicle and one trailer?
Yeah, with, with the variance, it, it allowed us to have both.
No, it didn't. It didn't, sir. It allowed the one truck that you had to be overweight.
Yes, and then the, then the one normal truck that was underweight.
Yes, but you, according to the bylaw, you can only have one truck.
Correct. That's why I was looking for the special permit to have the second truck.
No, you were looking for a variance, I would think, to have the two trucks. And we need to know.
Oh, yes, that's.
We need to know why. Why they can't, why you can't do with the one and have the other truck in Westboro.
Because the trucks can't stay out in the wintertime. They need to be inside because they're, they got, there, there's water, fresh water in them. And the, the water will freeze in the winter and, and crack the tanks.
And you don't have any garage facilities in Westboro?
I don't.
Where in Westboro are you located, please?
Water Street.
And do you own a lot of land, or do you?
No, it's not a lot. It's, it's a lot.
Well, is it an acre, half an acre, three acres?
Yeah. It's an acre. It's, it's bigger than, bigger than an acre.
And what is the zoning there?
Residential.
So they're allowing you to store this material in a residential area?
Yes, I don't have any problems with, with anybody there. Because like I say, there's no, there, there, there's no order with, with these.
Okay, so if we were to restrict you to one vehicle and one trailer as given the bylaw and give you the overweight for one vehicle, now we go on to employees. You're allowed two employees. So could you tell me who your employees? How, how many employees you have?
I have three employees.
Okay. Are they relatives living at your household?
One, yes. And the other is my, and the other is my son that's here part-time.
Are you counting yourself in that three?
No.
So it's yourself plus three?
Correct.
Now, you haven't asked for any variance for the number of employees. So the potential is there for us to limit you to yourself plus two. And asking you to declare who those two would be. Okay. There was other equipment being stored on the property. I think you mentioned your brother's backhoe or something was there. Is that there?
What's that?
Is that still there?
No, no, just mine, just mine. A lot of that equipment was just temporarily here because like I say, he, he was, well, he's moving to Columbia.
Well, that's more than we need to know.
Yeah, yeah.
Long as they're not, it's not there any longer.
Correct, okay.
Okay, does anybody else on the board have questions for Mr. Curtis?
I, I guess maybe just this, this will help clarify. How many of the people that, or how many of your employees are legal residents of that address?
Three.
So three of the four are legal residents of that address?
Correct. Well, which is going to be me, my daughter, and my son.
Okay.
That's yourself plus two, correct?
Yes, and that one, and then one that doesn't live here.
I'm sorry, Jimmy, you all set?
No, that was exactly what I was looking for.
Does anyone else have anything? Yes.
Um, yeah. Um, I don't know if this has been explained before, but when you have the porta-potties, are they cleaned at your property?
No, they come back clean.
So they go somewhere else to be processed?
Yes.
Okay.
Jenny, do you have something you'd like to say?
I had the same question Pat did. And it was answered, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on the board have any questions? If not, we received an anonymous letter. I usually don't put too much faith in anonymous letters, but I'm going to ask if Leanne could read into the rec, record the letter that we received.
Lynn, in addition to that, since the last hearing, two other emails were received from, I'm guessing, a Butters. So there's a total of three that we received.
Okay. So one of, we went to the record at the last meeting, correct?
Yes, that was, Mr. LaGrenice was read into record last time and another one that Susanna read into record. But three more have come in since. The McDonald's was the other one that was read into record last month.
Okay.
Do you want me to read all three of the new ones?
Maybe we'll break it up then. You sent out all three of those or just one of them?
No, I sent all, all three when they came in.
Okay, I need a volunteer to read one of them. Are they all anonymous, or?
No, the first one was, was on December 2nd from Mike Cochrane. Then there was the anonymous one sent out on December 11th. And also on December 12th, one was received from the Lucas family.
Okay, who would like to read the anonymous one?
No problem, I can if you want.
Thank you, Kat.
Okay, December 11th, 2002, 23, to the Berlin zoning board, members of appeal. I received a letter concerning an appeal for Jeffrey Curtis CSI Cully Septic for December 12, 2023. I cannot make the meeting, however, I would like to comment on this proposal. If you review the Berlin bylaws pertinent to this business, it is evident that they have not been complying for quite some time. When the business was started in 2006, 7, they built a large, huge barn to house one septic pumping vehicle. When finished with business of the day, the vehicle was at times out of sight. You do not know there was a septic business in that residential community. Since that time, this business has expanded to include two large septic pumping vehicles that are parked outside of the residence at all hours. Presently now, they have two smaller pumping tank vehicles with trailers to pump out and transport porta-potties. At one point, I counted 14 on a trailer. Please see their website, www.csi-septic.com and see for yourself. At any given time during working hours, there are at least 10 to 12 private vehicles parked outside of the residence. Not to mention the speeding vehicle from that resident each day going down and up and down the road. Plus the speeding smaller pump trucks flying down up the road. At times, when the wind is blowing a certain way, you can smell septic odors, which can only be equated to new porta-potties business. This is not a business for a residential community such as ours. I understand that everyone has a right to conduct a business of their choosing. Businesses need to demonstrate their commitment to adhering to the town bylaws, certificates and license here. From what I have found, this business was not compliant for approximately six years regarding their town issue certificate slash license and has clearly violated Article 5540, Home-Based Contracting Business 540.1-540.9. To grant site plan approval on Article 12, Administration Section 1230, site plan approval would harm every residence on this road besides theirs. The property values will diminish, diminish, septic smell will increase, and speeding vehicles will increase. This road is not a place for expanding septic business. It needs to be moved to an industrial-type environment for the purpose, for this purpose, not a residential community. Not signs.
That was the anonymous letter.
Could I get someone else to read one of the other two letters, either from Cochrane's or the Lucases? Okay, Leanne.
I'll read, I'll read the one. This was an email from William Lucas received on Tuesday, December 12th to Berlin ZBA. Unfortunately, we are not able to join that ZBA meeting tonight. However, we would like to express a concern regarding the request for a variance that would increase large truck traffic and storage of septic and portable chemical toilets at 107 Coburn Road. Please consider this letter as our objection to extending this variance. Sincerely, the Lucas Family, 122 Coburn Road.
Okay, we have one left. Jenny, could I impose upon you to read the one from the conference?
I am looking for it, Lynn. I had Lucas and the anonymous.
Yeah, this was way back early December, Jenny, December 2nd.
Okay, December 2nd. This is a long one. I only have one page. Was that correct?
It is, yeah, the second page was just a picture.
All right.
If you have the sincerely Mike Conquer, then you have the whole thing.
I have, I have most of it. Do, if you have some, could you finish just the very last?
Sure.
Okay, this is a little bit long. This is, Dear zoning board members, my name is Mike Cochrane and I live at 143 Coburn Road. I attended the October 11th zoning board meeting on the permitting request of CSI Cully Septic. It was the first zoning board meeting I've ever attended. I dropped by Town Hall afterwards because I wanted to say that I was very impressed with the zoning board members' questions seemingly exceeding their permit from the get-go. Unfortunately, I was informed that all of you are volunteers and work out of your home, so I wasn't able to say this to your person. and work out of your home, so I wasn't able to say this to your person. This email is so that I can at least say it to you in writing. I've nev- never met Mr. Cully and can only say that I often hear the trucks and equipment on their property as well as the spotlight that faces my property that is on all night. Also, the occasional I'm sorry, it's small printing. The smalling the occasional gunfire, which is the reason why I've never gone over to meet Mr. Cully. Thankfully, there is a vacant lot between us, but they will likely have a house put on it soon, and they will then be the Butters to Mr. Cully's property. I am in agreement that Mr. Cully's neighbors about being against the permit application. I have no problem with anyone running a business from their property as long as it doesn't, one, pollute the air with pollutants, odors, and/or noise beyond what would be expected by any typical residential living in a residentially zoned area. Two, pollute the groundwater, which is something shared amongst all of us. I feel both of these two points are in danger of being a reality if the permit request is allowed. This isn't because of his previous septic business, which should only involve a large septic truck. But it is because of these expansion requests to add porta potties to his business. This business expansion would increase the heavy truck requirements beyond what should be allowed in a residentially zoned area. The cleaning of the porta potties would expose the neighbors to foul-smelling odors, noise, and threatens the groundwater that all of us rely on. This isn't only about the obvious human waste associated with the potties, but also because of the strong toxic chemicals that are used in the potties when in use, as well as the chemicals used to clean them. Thankfully, Mr. Cully says he has a Westboro property which he could use for his business expansion plans. I definitely would not like to deny anyone from having an expanding or expanding their business except wherein it negatively impacts those living around him and everyone who is sharing the same air and water resources as him. One other point I'd like to add, Mr. Cully said during the meeting that there were only a couple of porta potties on his property, but I did a Google, Google map satellite view of the address. The C attachment and if it showed that it looks like around 15 porta potties and enough area cleared out for nearly a hundred, nearly a hundred of them. This worries me even more because he seems to be asking for a permit and downplaying the correct current size of the business. But it clearly looks to me like the business is already going and is at best seven times larger than he is saying it is with room to grow more. Much larger. I have no idea when the Google map satellite image was taken. Usually it's within the past, and this is where I don't have anything more, Leanne.
Okay, I continue. Um, I have no idea when this Google map satellite image was taken. Usually it's within the past couple of years to maybe five years or so ago, but it, but what it shows is that he's clearly already running his business expansion from his Berlin property, and it's much more than just a couple of porta potties, which his other neighbors have already acknowledged. This makes the si- situation more urgent to deal with now that now, and for the zoning board to reassert the residential agricultural zoning requirements for all of us before it gets completely out of hand, except that according to his other neighbors, it already is out of hand. But again, thankfully, Mr. Cully says he has a Westboro property where he can conduct his business without further negative impact to his Berlin neighbors, and so I wish him well and a good business. Sincerely, Mike Cochran.
Thank you, ladies. Mr. Curtis?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you understand the position that we're in?
Um, I, I do, and I also-
Obviously expanded the business well beyond what was originally granted to you. You failed to renew your initial permit even for what was allowed to you. And now you're asking us to allow at least a limited expansion. And one of the things we need to be careful of is that it's not detrimental to the neighborhood. It appears that quite a few of your neighbors think it's pretty detrimental. Could you
Yes, actually.
why we should go ahead and grant what you're asking?
Okay, could I, um, could I just say, um, that I have talked to other Butters uh, that, that don't want to get involved, but there's one, uh, one person, um, that says that they have a vendetta against us. Um, so I'm thinking that was probably with the target practice. So where he has approached, there was one letter that you read uh, from the last letter from the na- that's two neighbors up, um, in the blue house in between that vacant lot. Um, the only person that I have discussed about keeping porta potties in Westboro would be Mark Lajones. So there is no other, that, yeah, there's no other person that I've discussed with. Um, but, but I, the, 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 the main thing while, while we're here, I'm just asking if, if we can, if we can just keep the trucks here. Not even the porta, the porta potties won't even be here. It would just be the trucks, to park the trucks in the garage where they're heated so I can, so they don't freeze up. And, 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 and that's pretty much it, that, that this and would, would, would anything change if we acquired more land?
You, if you acquired more land and it was greater than 160,000 square feet, um, and you would need more than, or you would need at least, well, it'd have to be greater than 300 feet of frontage. Okay? Then you're allowed three employees and two vehicles less than 26,000 pounds. And one trailer.
Okay. So if I was to acquire three acres?
Well, what frontage would you have?
The, uh, I would actually have, um, yeah, I would have 300 and, you know, the frontage is here somewhere. 300, uh, right here, frontage, I'd have 329 feet of frontage.
Well, that would be a topic for a later time. Right now, we need to deal what's before us. And I'm trying, trying to afford you the opportunity to convince us that we should not only grant what you originally had, which was one truck that was oversized, um, and one employee. Given historically what has happened there. I mean, we, we're in a bit of a, a quandary here, um, trying-
Technically, nothing's really changed uh, other than the porta potties, which, which don't, yeah, which, which will not be here no more.
I don't think you're listening to me, Mr. Curtis.
Yeah.
You now have two trucks that are over the 26,000 squi- uh,
Not just, just one.
You just told me two.
No, I told you one was underweight.
One truck over 26?
Well, it's, yeah, one, one truck that's over 26,000.
Okay, but that's the only truck you would be allowed.
You can't have a truck under 26?
I, I can't have a truck under 26?
You're allowed one truck total.
One truck and one trailer total is what you are allowed.
Okay. So I, I would be asking if I could keep both trucks here.
Well, you are asking that, and I'm asking you to help us.
Yeah.
Do you understand the quandary we're in, when you haven't lived up to your original permit? And the neighbors are, I would say, up in arms. And we're looking to expand your business. I, I just, can you help me?
Yeah, I, I understand the, the concern for the porta potties and, and, and those, like I say, those will be off-site permanently.
Okay, does anybody else on the board have anything to ask? Is there anyone in the audience that cares to make a comment?
Yes, Mr. Lajones has his hand up.
Would you promote him, please?
Yeah. Hang on, I'm just plugging in because my battery's getting low. Okay, um, and also his attorney, Mike Gatlin. Do you want me to promote both?
If you would, please. And we'll hear from Mr. Lajones and his attorney in whatever order they
And I'd also like to add that I did talk to Jack and Betty, too.
No, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Hi, folks, can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I'm sorry, but as I listen to this, and it's just as well that I'm on mute. Um, I, I'm sorry, but the property owner is just not being forthcoming. I mean, this is absolutely ridiculous. He, he's, he's, he's six years over. He's had complete disregard for the bylaws. We, we had a meeting, he says he doesn't know, thinks I'm the only one that has a, a notice that he has a place in Westboro. He literally told us on the last meeting that he had commercial space in Westboro, and that's where he's storing these things. I, i- if, if you think that these things don't smell, or if there's no odor associated with them, I suggest that any of you that have used a porta potty know what they smell like. And if you think that they don't smell over in Westboro as much as they smell over here, that's ridiculous.
We're not talking about Westboro.
And, and I want to know why the owner needs to be, for his own business, needs to be coached. We literally talked about the bylaws, asked if he knew about the bylaws, and then we still had him not following the bylaws.
Would you please mute yourself until you're recognized? Mr. Lajones, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I just want to say that there, that what is being told to you is not what I would consider to be forthcoming. The business, there has been porta toilets on there, up to, I've seen them come out a dozen at a time. There, there are two large pump trucks on the property. One of them runs and has run, it's deafening when it runs. There's another truck that he has out. He says he wants to store them because they're going to freeze. Well, they stay out all night. All of a sudden, now everything's tidy and being put away. If, if you, if you allow these permits to go through, why am I being muted?
Oh, sorry, that was me. I apologize.
If you, if you allow for these permits and these variances to be issued, enforce this. Is it going to be up to us to be constantly coming to the town and saying, hey, what's going on here? They had their opportunity. And I'm sorry, but, but i- i- there's no respect for the neighbors. There's none.
Mr. Gatlin, did you wish to say anything?
A few points if I could. First of all, in following this hearing through two meetings, I, I'm still unclear about basic facts into
We've lost you-
All part-time and three part-time employees. I don't care whether you're talking full or part-time, it's fine.
We've lost you again.
This hardship from the zoning- Michael, Michael, hold on. Somebody keeps on muting you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Give me just a second. Mark, can you please mute yourself? Because you and Mr. Gatlin have each other on background, so we're getting feedback through. All right, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Gatlin.
All right, so this is, it's a question about the number of employees. There's a continuing question about the number of trucks. There's been some brief mention of hardship to Mr. Curtis, which seems to be, from his point of view, things that make his business more difficult. And from a typical land use and zoning point of view, hardship has to do with things like lot size, topography, shape, and things like that. What Mr. Curtis is effectively looking for, as I read it, is a use variance, which I don't see authorized under your bylaw. Um, the idea that, um, it's okay within a residential context to have somewhere between eight and 10 cars parked in front of the building every day obviously has a significant impact on the character of the neighborhood, the, the value of the property. Um, and, and there's no way of telling whether those 10 cars are people visiting and, and, and having a good time with Mr. Curtis, or whether in fact they are all employees in some form or another. I don't need to tell this board that the purpose of zoning bylaws is to protect the integrity of neighborhoods, to protect the integrity of the uses in those neighborhoods, to protect safety of people walking, living, driving, otherwise visiting the neighborhood. And different types of zoning plans are set up with the purpose of segregating commercial and industrial use from residential use. This is an almost unbelievable combination of industrial and commercial uses within a residential district. If anybody on the board had someone like this next door creating these kinds of uses, you'd all be up in arms. I'm, I'm kind of amazed at this point that the building inspector hasn't enforced the bylaw to this point, notwithstanding the fact that the, the variance and special permits long ago expired. I'm concerned about the ability of the town to police this, no matter what kind of decisions made tonight. And I, I just, I also have to question in terms of the, uh, the, the use or, or non-use of the porta potties, whether in fact the Board of Health should also be involved in this. There are just a lot of issues here that make this unacceptable from the type of variances and special permits that are contemplated by your bylaw. This is just not any way capable of being a use consistent with a residential neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Does anyone on the board have anything that they'd like to add?
Could I add something, ma'am?
Go ahead, Mr. Curtis.
Um, I've reached out to the Board of Health, um, to actually, uh, to, to give a statement. And they said that, uh, yep, they, they said that it, it's not protocol for them to come out to a property uh, unless, uh, for this situation, uh, unless they were requested by the town. Um, so I tried to have the Board of Health, and I've actually, uh, and, and when I did talk to him, he's like, I travel that road every day, and he's like, not once has he ever smelled any kind of septic-related stuff. And then I did talk to Jack and Betty, uh, which is my next-door neighbor. Um, and, yeah, and, um, they even told me, uh, with, with the letter that they wrote for the original meeting, uh, they wrote that be- because they had to because of Mark. Um, Mark, yeah, there, there was a conflict.
That's obscenity.
Uh, so, yeah, so- So, a- and then in terms of the vehicles, there's only two, there, there's only, uh, the, the two trucks. Uh, so there, there's two full-time residents, there's three part-time residents. Having six to eight vehicles here isn't out of the question. Um, there's only, uh, uh, so, so it's, i- it's like, there, there's no law stating that I, I can have ten, twelve, fifteen, twenty cars here. There's nothing says that I can't, as long as they're all registered and insured, and they're not commercial. Like I say, alls, alls I have, alls I have is my two trucks. That's all I have, and that's all I've had for the last fifteen years. And now all of a sudden that, that it's time to get the new permit, uh, the, the vehicles are the problem. And, 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 and everything, and everything that I have, that the twenty-twenty-one.
I can hear you now on this.
Okay.
I'm being interrupted.
And I might call you back if I need to, but get off.
Then you're muted.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
You do understand the parameters of a special permit. A special permit is not something you get by right. It is somewhat like a license, okay? And it is to be used sparingly. The home-based contracting business is an exception to zoning that the planning board allows based upon the list of occupations that are in the definition. You came to the board some eleven, twelve years ago, and they granted you a permit for one oversized truck, one employee, and it appears from what the neighbors have said that was fine for some ten years. And it has only been recently that there has been a significant problem.
Yeah, and I think they're referring to the loud exhaust. Um, a- and I'm going to go back to, my trucks are brand new. They, they passed mass inspection, they can't be modified in any way.
Mr. Curtis, if I may continue?
I'm sorry.
So, we have to be diligent when we are granting these special permits.
Yes, ma'am.
We need to, um, be sure that we are not forming issues in neighborhoods.
Correct.
Your last permit, after it expired, created dissension in your neighborhood. Now, I'm sure that you have your supporters, but you also have those who are very concerned, even though they weren't concerned.
Because of that one, because of that one neighbor.
And, no, I, we are.
Yeah.
You're drawing conclusions, Mr. Curtis, and let me finish, please.
Yeah.
Um, after having, uh, experienced what we experienced with your last permit, which you let expire and unwittingly seriously expanded your use, can you help us determine why we should grant you more than what you had before? Given that this is not a right, a special permit is not a right that you have.
Correct.
A special permit is somewhat like a driver's license. This is what legal counsel advises us. And it's at the discretion and knowledge of a board, whether it be the planning board or the Board of Appeals. I'm having difficulty with it. I would expect that maybe some of my colleagues are, too. And so far, I have heard no explanation from you as to why you expanded this business, not only in violation, but without your original permit. If you could make me understand that, it might be helpful for you.
Why I expanded the business? I expanded the business, I mean, as times go on, I mean, it was to better my family, really. Um, to, to pay for my kid's college. Um, I mean, I, I, I got, you know, a- again, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm just, you know, I'm just trying to, trying to support a family. That's all I'm trying to do. Uh, I'm not trying to, wh- when I built, every, everybody's saying that I'm dragging down the values of everybody's house. I'm increasing the value of everybody's house. I added that, but when I added that barn, uh, because like I say, I talked to Jack and Betty about this, and when I added that barn, uh, that added the value to everybody's house. With all the noise that he might be hearing, it's definitely going to be, there's a lot of construction going on around here. And, and, and everybody thinks everything is happening here, which it, it is not. And, and I, yes, my, my business hours, yeah, were seven to seven, um, as far as, you know, trucks in and out. But I'm always back, you know, one-thirty, two o'clock, I, I'm never back past, you know, three o'clock at the latest when we're busy. Um, so, a- and like I say, the truck i- i- is in, it's in and out, it, and I, uh, and to where the traffic was so bad, uh, from the last meeting, I had to go buy a camera, um, to put out a, yeah, to, to put at the bottom of my driveway, um, to, to see where all this traffic is coming from, and I, I went, we went a full week. Uh, that, one, one day, we counted over eight hundred cars and trucks. A- and half of them, over half of them, were commercial. That, that has nothing to do with us. And, and there's people that blow their horns, a- and, I mean, I ca- I can't control, you know, the noise, the loud exhaust. That's, that's nothing to do with us. That's nothing at all.
All right, Mr. Curtis, if I may, Mr. Lajones has his hand raised.
Uh, I'm sorry, folks. Uh, the noise i- is that it's emanating from the property, the traffic that's in and out of the property. These people are just not being forthcoming with you, and I'm, I'm u- I'm choosing my words because I don't want to be inflammatory. Uh, you're, that, this is, what is being portrayed to you is not is not what the situation is, and I, I don't know how, w- we're, we're, we're even considering this at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Lajones. Yes, we am.
There's a Heather Calderwood in the, uh, in attendance with her hand up.
I can't hear what's going on.
Thank you. Would you promote her, please?
I don't know how. I will mute myself.
Heather, can you hear us?
She's muted.
I'd like to also comment, as you've seen, um, you know, anonymous letters come in, and, um, with all due respect to the chair, um, what we've experienced as a result of talking about, out about this, I understand why people might come forward and not want to share their names.
Yes, Heather.
Hi.
Please go ahead.
Hi, I just want to say, I live on Randall Road, um, right off of Coburn. And I can tell you that the, the trucks that go by from CSI, I never hear. What I hear, what I he- hello? Okay, what I hear are more of the trucks and the trailers, um, going by to, um, the junkyard down there with all the scrap and all of that. I, I drive down Coburn Road. I, I have gone into, um, Jeff's property, and I've never smelt one thing.
Come on, folks.
Uh, like, I don't, I, I, I'm very confused a- as to where all these, these neighbors are coming from, because I live right up the street, technically. I mean, not too far.
That are butters.
I understand that. I understand that, but I drive by and I've driven into, into Jeff's property, and I have never smelt one thing. So I'm, I, I'm confused at where they're coming from.
That's fortunate.
All right, Ms. Calderwood.
It's not fortunate. I drive in there very many times, and I've never smelt one thing. I drive down Coburn Road in the summer with my, my windows open. I never, I never see any activity, anything. The most I see.
We live here, and we can't open our windows.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mark, but.
Hold on, hold on.
I'm not here for you.
Heather, please hold on.
Yes.
This is, you're both addressing this board, not each other.
I understand, that's what I'm trying to do.
Well, I, I'm just telling the both of yous, you're to address the board, not each other. Thank you.
I'm trying to address you, and he, he's piping in, so.
I understand that. I'm just, you're not the only one here, so.
No, I understand, sir, I understand.
Okay.
I'm just saying, like, uh, he keeps piping in and over talking me, so.
All right, well, let's address the board.
Okay, I'm addressing the board. I live, if you go up Coburn Road, which you guys all live in the town, you go up Coburn Road, you take a left, I'm right there. I very rarely see the truck go by, and if I do, I never hear it. So I don't know, I don't understand what he's hearing. I have been to Jeff's house many, many times and never smelt one thing. So, and I drive down Coburn Road twice a day with windows open, never smell anything. So, I, I highly doubt he is. I'm sorry. I, I just think that it, it's a vengeance thing, and it's, you know, it's a business in town, and that's what we should be promoting. We should, we should be happy that we have a business in town, and he cares about people in town, and just, i- it just doesn't make sense to me.
Thank, thank you for your input.
Yes, I'm sorry, but.
I'd just like to address the board, and Mr. Lajones, if you can, um, we did have another hearing scheduled for seven-thirty. We have run way over, partially fifteen minutes due to technical difficulties. But I think the board, I'd like to have a feel for where you're coming from. There are one of three things that we can do with the site plan, special permit, and, um, variance that we have before us. Uh, one is to grant all three. One is to, um, reject all three. And the other is some combination, either allowing what was original and nothing more, or, um, allowing some increase. Um, I'd like to know um, where folks are coming from and where they're leaning to, so that we might be able to fashion a decision here. Jim, do you have comment?
Obviously, there's a lot of, uh, heated dissent or heated feelings on both sides of this, uh, both pro and con. Uh, there's obviously several neighbors that are interested in not having anything happening there. But as mentioned also, um, since I've been on this board anyway, we do have a history of, uh, I don't think we've ever denied a home-based contracting business special permit since I've been on this board. And I think that's a good thing for the town. Uh, we can certainly use, uh, businesses in town for a lot of things. So I'm a little torn on this.
Okay, anyone else? Um, Pat, you have thoughts?
I always have thoughts, but I think that as a town, you know, as a person in town, and Mr. Curtis has property in Westboro, I just personally think it would be so nice for everyone concerned if he would move the business to Westboro. Your neighbors would be happy, it would solve all your problems. And I, I can understand, you know, I'm not sure, especially a site plan. We really haven't seen a site plan. A variance is there forever, so even with a site plan or a variance, I'm sorry, I haven't pulled them out. I, working hours, seven to seven, I wouldn't, I'm sorry, I wouldn't want that next door to me.
Thank you. Jenny, do you have any thoughts?
Um, yes. You know, I, I do feel it's a residential area. He had a special permit. And I would consider or agree, uh, that we return being a residential area and keeping it residential as much as possible. We are a small town. I still enjoy our rural country. And being a neighbor, I truly understand how they feel. If I were a neighbor, I would also be appalled at porta-potties and all. Uh, Mr. Curtis does have the property in Westboro, and I, I would think he could easily move it there, as, as Pat said, and protect the neighborhood. If, if we were to go back and allow the original permit, uh, to one truck and one trailer, um, I think that's reasonable. It's not a detriment to the neighborhood. But it, uh, it, it's been a bit confusing, because there's three employees, a- and then there's part-time, three, two full, myself, and it, it, I just got rather confused in all the, the explanation of who actually really lives, how many live there. And I don't know, it's kind of a, a mishmash, but that's my thoughts, is to uh, perhaps allow the original permit.
Thank you, Jenny. Denny, do you have any thoughts?
Yes, I know, staying wise.
Mr. Curtis, would you mute yourself? Thank you. I'm sorry.
You're fine, Denny, go ahead.
Okay. The original permit, I could go with and have it so that the porta lots go to Westboro, and this truck can stay in the garage where it should be, it's undercover, and it can't get damaged, because I mean, I've played with stuff like this my whole life. You leave it out there and it freezes up, it's no good. So, I would be in favor of going with the original permit.
Thank you. Keith, do you have any thoughts?
No, I mean, just to echo what everybody's been saying, it sounds like there wasn't really any problems, um, with the permit when it was a smaller business. I mean, it's a good thing that your business has grown and grown to the point that, you know, you need more employees and more trucks. But at some point, it does make sense that it, it's getting too big for the neighborhood. Um, so, you know, that's, that's a good and bad thing. Um, so I, I also would be in support of of bringing it back to the original, um, agreement, and I don't know how you would make that happen for your business, but, um, but that seems to be the most reasonable solution from our standpoint.
Okay, Mr. Curtis, you understand what, what is going on here? There seems to be some sympathy for allowing you to have your original con, uh, original special. Um, that would require that you only have one truck on the premises, not two.
One overweight.
An oversized truck, because that's all that was allowed. That was what the variance was for originally. Uh, number two, that you only have the maximum allowed number of employees, which is two. And you would have to state who those folks would be, I would assume, because you can't change them day to day. If the board were to consider, and I say consider, not necessarily grant, but going what was originally authorized for you, and forbidding the storage of any other materials, any other work materials, is this plausible for you?
That's too nonfit. Yes.
What would you do with the second truck that's gonna freeze?
I'd have to set it outside and let it freeze. That's all I can do.
In Westboro, right?
Yeah, that's all I can do.
Okay. All right, I think we've spent an exceedingly long period of time on this, and maybe it's time for someone to come forth with a motion. Um, I don't know, Jim, you seem to be adept at doing this.
All right. Um, I'll make a motion that we grant a special permit for a home-based contracting business pursuant to Section 540 of these zoning bylaws. For one vehicle. And no storage on-site. There, well, the one vehicle, which is to be garaged anytime it is on-site, and no other materials on-site.
What about number of employees?
Well, the way I'm reading the bylaw, he's within it. It says, in, in Section 540 dot two, it says, "Employees coming to the premises who are not residents thereon shall not exceed the number specified in Section 541." So Section 541 says two for his sub lot size, so he can have two employees that are not residents, um, according to the bylaw.
There would be no pumping trucks there, though, right?
Excuse me?
He also has-
One pumping truck. That, that's the one that he had before.
Okay, not the two.
Well, I, my recommendation is that we only, we stick to the one truck. Um, and the variance for whether we want to allow him to go to an overweight vehicle or not is a separate, would be a separate vote, is, I believe.
Well, it could all be together, but what would be your suggestion for the overweight?
Personally, I'm inclined not to allow the overweight truck and just say, leave it at the 26,000 pounds.
Okay. Do we have anyone else that has, um, or want to make a second to the motion that Jim has made? And I'm taking that motion to be, to grant the special permit and site plan for one truck. Um, and, um.
One truck, two employees, two non-resident employees.
Two non-resident employees.
And no material storage on-site.
Right. And thereby not granting a variance for the truck size.
Correct.
What was the original agreed to? Was the oversized truck agreed to on the original permit?
It was. It was given a variance. And quite honestly, I think, um, counsel has, um, counsel for Mr. Lajones, Pat, Mr. Catlin, I think it is, had a point. Um, Chapter 48, for variances, is very specific. We give dimensional variances. It excludes variances for use unless it's explicitly uh, in the town's bylaw. The only thing that is explicitly in the town bylaw for the town of Berlin beyond, um, what is authorized in 48 is for non, pre-existing non-conforming. They allow us to change the use to a less detrimental use. So there is something to be said for the fact that giving a variance on the vehicle is, um, not within our purvie. But it was granted back in 2011 when the initial permit and the variance was tied to the special permit, so that variance has expired. It expired when the special permit expired. Does that answer your question, Kate?
It does. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second yet, Leanne?
I will first. I will second.
Okay, Ginny is seconding. Is there any further discussion as to what we're proposing here? We're saying that we would grant, um, this, the, the special permit for a home-based, um, contracting business with one vehicle and one trailer, meeting the requirements of 541 in the bylaw, and not granting a variance for an oversized truck.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll ask for a roll call vote, because we're on Zoom.
Aye.
All right, that, I'm just gonna say your name, so that everyone knows. Jim Royer?
Aye.
Pat Jackson?
Aye.
Jenny Bartlett?
Aye.
Ginny, Zakatinsky?
Aye.
Uh, Keith, Suzie?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, we have a vote. We have a decision. Do you understand fully, Mr. Curtis, what the vision means?
He's muted.
We can't hear you, Mr. Curtis.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, yes, I understand.
The big trucks go. Okay. And I think we will write into the decision that you must list your employees and, um, list the registration numbers, the registration number of the truck that you wish to use and trailer, and provide it to the building commissioner.
Yes.
There will be no porta potties or any other material associated with your business.
Okay.
Do you understand the ramifications of what we voted to do?
Yes, ma'am.
We denied the variance. We approved a special permit. And, um, I would just say, is there anyone in the audience that has comment before we close the hearing?
Mr. Lajones has to stand up.
Please promote him.
I'd like to state for the record, folks, that this is no vendetta. Um, I also would like to state for the record that I don't see how this is gonna be enforced. I see us continuing to be exposed to the noise that's emanating out of this property, even with what you've, what you've decided here tonight. Um, frankly, I don't know what I'll do going forward, um, but I'm disappointed. Um, we're still gonna have the, the traffic in and out of this property. We're still gonna have the vehicles in and out of the property. We're, I, I, I mean, you voted, so my voice now is, um, I'm just talking to my, I feel like I'm talking to myself now. And if you tell me that I'm to go to the building inspector, that, uh, I, I feel that the property owner probably has a really good relationship with the building inspector, and the fact that the town is employing him. So I feel as though, from a resident, having to come to the town to make a complaint, that I'm on the short end of that stack, as is anybody else that's spoken here or submitted to the board.
Mr. Lajones, I thank you for your comments. I have a suggestion for the committee. I understand Mr. Lajones's concerns. One of the things that we could do is amend the decision before we close the hearing and make the stipulation for two years instead of five. It is well within our purvie to do so, which means that Mr. Curtis would have to come back within the two-year period and request his special permit yet again. Uh, how do you folks feel about amending the decision?
I would support that.
Another option opening, at least.
Yeah.
Yeah. Shorter timeframe.
Okay, how about Jenny? Do you support that?
Yes.
Someone would like to make an amendment to the decision. Two things. Number one, require, uh, if it wasn't in the original decision, um, that the names of employees, um, and the registration numbers of the vehicles that are allowed on the property be supplied to the building inspector. Um, and number two, um, to limit the time of the permit to two years.
So I'm moved.
Is there a-
I'll second.
Who made the motion?
Pat.
Pat. Okay, um, any other discussion on this? Okay, uh, Mr. Royer?
Yes.
We're voting.
Okay, aye.
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Ginny?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Do you know, understand what our amended vote was, Mr. Curtis?
Yes, I do, ma'am.
And do you understand why we're doing it?
Yes.
We're not doing it because any neighbor said anything. We're doing it because you failed to live within the bounds of your previous permits. Okay, Mr. Lajones, does that, um, make you more comfortable?
I, um, I'd like to better understand how you go about enforcement, folks. I, I know you can, you can say these things, but we've just gone through six years of basically the wild, wild west up here, folks doing whatever they want. And short of neighbor, in, in this case right now, it's a vendetta, right? Uh, uh, it's not a vendetta, but there's been complete disregard for us. And I don't, are we, i- i- are we, is it up to us to be that neighbor that's constantly calling the building inspector and saying, is this within these regulations? It, it, to me, it's, it's not a great way to live, and I don't think any of you would want to live that way.
Well, I'm sorry you feel that way. I, I think the board has tried to be sensitive to both sides of the issue.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Time frame. We have told Mr. Curtis that we do not appreciate the fact that he would not live within the bounds of the permit he was given, and that he will be under scrutiny in two years. Two years from the date, um, that this is finalized by the town clerk. That means the 20 days for appeal have lapsed. I think, Mr. Curtis, I hope that you have learned something from this process and understand that, given a home-based contracting business, it's not a free rein to do whatever you wish to do. And, um, that the two big trucks will be gone. And the porta potties will not show up there, and there will only be one trailer on the property.
I, I only have two trucks, ma'am. You said both trucks have to go?
Well, you have two that are overweight.
No.
No, no, no.
Oh, well, they're pictured, they're pictured on your website. Okay, well, the overweight truck is gone, okay? It is only, uh, one of the, uh, other two that you have, the smaller ones.
I know, there's only two trucks, and, and-
There we go.
And, and the overweight one, the, the one that's almost a half a million dollars is the one that you want me to put outside and let it freeze up and, and ruin that truck, which, okay, which is fine. I gotta do what I gotta do, but-
Well, I, I would suggest you find some rental-
A half a million, half a million dollars, I gotta keep outside and hope that it don't freeze. And that's originally why I built that big garage, was, was to store that big truck in there. And like I say, it's, it's, it's almost a half a million dollars that I gotta leave outside now, and-
Or you need to find housing for.
Which I, wh- wh- which, which I have here. That's, that was the original-
Or find alternate housing for. Okay, I think we're done here.
Okay.
Um.
I'll make a motion that we close this hearing.
Is there a second, please? Thank you, Pat. Um, any further discussion on closing the hearing? If not, take a rope. I'm sorry, Mr. Lajones.
I just wanted to say thank you to the board. I know this has been a little tense. Thank you.
Yes, and we should say thank you also to the folks from 203 Crosby Road that have been waiting since 7:30. Um, Jim?
Aye.
Jim Royer? Pat?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Ginny?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Okay, it is quarter of nine, and do we still have people from 203? Um, parliament people from 203 Crosby Road?
Lynn?
Yes.
I just, again, before you open the hearing, I wanted to let you know that I did verify a butter notification, newspaper notification by the appropriate deadlines.
Thank you. Do we have folks for 203 Crosby in the audience?
Yes, I see, um, Gregory Day, the applicant, and also, um, Casey Toto.
Okay, I'll open the hearing again. I think I said at 8:45. 413 Crosby Road, in our apartment.
If something was said, I did not hear it as I was joining.
Yes, you, you, you're, uh, we can hear you, and you can hear us. Mr. Day, are you there? I think you're muted, Mr. Day.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear. Yes, we can hear you. Okay, we have a petition for an in-law apartment at 203 Crosby Road. First, let me express the board's appreciation for your patience. We try to schedule these hearings half an hour apart, and I am sure, as you heard, our last one was a little more contentious than when we did them on. So is it yourself that is going to proceed and explain what you want to do here, or?
Yes.
Well, please do so.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and Madam Chair. Crosby Really in Trust hired us to remodel 203 Crosby Road in Berlin. A set of plans was given to each, well, the ZBA members. And if you refer to Plan 2A, it shows the layout of the existing or new layout of the structure, the house. We are proposing to do an in-law. And as you know, if all of them, all of you have a plan in front of you, referred to page, a Plan 2A.
Okay, Mr. Day, is there anything else that you would like to tell us?
Yes, the size of the in-law approximately is 21 by 34, which equals 714 square feet of living space. And usually 35% of the number of the total living space of the house, which is 2,238 square feet, which is on the back, on Plan 2A, which equals a 35%, 785 square feet. So we're within the required 785 for the in-law.
And do you understand the restrictions as to who can live there? Mr. Day?
Yes.
Does the petitioner understand the restrictions under which the space can be occupied?
Yes.
Okay, did you have anything, Casey, that you wanted to add to what has been said?
No, thank you. He described it.
Now, there was some confusion mentioned to us that at one time this property had two structures on it that were both living units. Was the land subdivided? How many living units are there on that property?
There is an existing, which the one we're doing over now, the remodeled House 203, there is another house there at 199 Crosby Road on the same property, but that is scheduled to be removed.
Okay, so you would have no problem with us writing that number 199 Crosby will be just small, excuse me, will be demolished?
Yes.
And the use abandoned?
Yes, that's what I've been told.
You're only allowed two living units. You know, you can have a dwelling plus an in-law or a dwelling plus an accessory, but you can't have more than that on a single-family lot.
Correct.
It's also required that conservation and septic provide input. Have we received any input from conservation or septic or Board of Health?
Now, are you asking about 203 or 199?
203.
They have done all the work. Well, to back up a little bit, each board did get a set of plans. They had to sign off on them, and each board did sign off, and that's conservation, water health, and building inspector, of course, got us at this point, yes.
Sent a letter. Do you have copies of letters from the Board of Health and conservation?
Just saying that they received the plan, they reviewed the plan, and that's about it. That was
That's all we need.
Okay. I do have a, I mean, it's, go ahead.
That would be comments through the software portal on the building permit. So that's where those approvals were made.
Okay.
Okay, so you have those, do you, Leanne?
Yes, I could print them if needed.
And could you send them to the board members?
Sure.
Okay, fine, because we do require that Board of Health sign off. In other words, the number of bedrooms the septic system will handle. And in conservation, that there's no conservation land involved. Okay, what else do we need to investigate? There is a separate entence for the in-law. It has its own kitchen facilities, correct?
Correct.
The outside appearance, from what I saw in the plans, is that of a single-family residence. The number of the apartment shall not exceed FOA. And it has to be an owner-occupied residence. And the occupancy of the in-law apartment is limited to no more than three persons, at least one of which is related by blood or marriage to the resident owner of the premises. Those would all be stipulations. You have no problem with any of those stipulations, I take it?
No, ma'am, I don't.
And what's the size of your lot? Square footage? Do we know?
I don't honestly know right off the top of my head.
Okay. But obviously, you've got a permit for the house, and you're not going to make the house any bigger, right?
There is, there is an addition off to the side, but that's on the forward side of the upper-level floor plan that you're looking at. There are two small, very small additions. One is eight by five, which is basically a breezeway. And the other one is a six by 11. Just like a seasonal off to the side.
Okay, does anyone on the board have any questions? We wore you out with the last hearing, guys, huh?
Who's going to be the primary's residence, resident of that?
Casey, would you care to answer that question?
You're asking a question to me?
I'm asking Ms. Tito.
Casey, yeah.
Yeah, I will be living there.
Okay. And resident is owned by Kevin and Casey? Is that true?
Yes.
Okay. Are you coming from the western part of the state?
I am.
Oh, wow. Well, welcome to eastern Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Anyone have anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to authorize an in-law apartment at 203 Crosby Road with the stipulation that number 199 Crosby Road, which is also a dwelling on the same property, will be demolished and abandoned, and that it would meet all of the stipulations in the bylaw for an in-law apartment. Would someone care to make that motion?
So moved.
I just sense where you folks are going. When you're quiet, you're usually positive. Okay, is there a second, please? Okay, that's Pat Jackson. I'll do a roll call vote. Jim Roya?
Aye.
Pat Jackson?
Aye.
Jenny Batlett?
Aye, aye.
That's a lot of ayes, Danny.
That's a three for one. Jenny Zakatinsky?
She's muted.
Yep.
Jenny, did you vote?
Aye.
Okay, and Keith?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, Ms. Toto and Mr. Day. I'm slow, so it may be a week before the decision gets written. It then has to sit and wait for the appropriate signatures to be placed on it at the town hall. It then has to be filed with the town clerk. With the town clerk stamps it, it then has a 20-day waiting period before it's legitimately authorized. I don't think, or at least in past history, the building commissioner has been has allowed folks to continue with their construction, knowing that they are in jeopardy if there is someone who raises issue with it of having to tear out whatever they do, namely the kitchen. After, you will get notified, you will get a copy of our decision. And then after the 20 days has matured, you will get a second. Well, after the 20 days has expired without incident, as far as an appeal goes, you need to go to the town clerk's office and pick up the original decision that is signed by the zoning board folks. Because that's all that they will accept at Worcester Registry of Deeds when you go to record it. After you record it, you should give a copy of the indication of the recording from the Worcester Registry of Deeds and bring that back to the town clerk. Because she will file it with her other paperwork, having to do with this in-law apartment. This is to safeguard you. It's in the Registry of Deeds. It's on record. Casey or Gregory, do you have any questions? Have I just managed to make things murkier?
Hey, you've done a great job, Madam Chair. I appreciate your patience as well. Just a couple of questions I have. One is, when you say 20 days, is it 20 business days? Or is it 20 days from the time all the people sign off? And I mean, are we talking a month here, 30 days?
We're talking about, after all the signatures and everything, and it gets filed with the town clerk, it waits 20 days. My understanding is, it's 20 calendar days. But that would be something that you might want to verify with the town clerk. But you can call her and ask her if your special permit has matured and pick it up and file it. And I strongly suggest you file it. Give her proof that it has been filed with the Registry of Deeds. You know, 20, 30 years from now, sometimes these things pop up, and they say, you know, "Town, go looking in your archives." And that may be the one file that's missing. Well, if you filed it with the Registry of Deeds, you're in good stead.
If I may just add on here, one quick item, that just a reminder that under Section 525 of the zoning bylaw, this permit expires in five years.
Right.
So it needs to be renewed every five years.
What exactly is involved as far as renewing the process? What do they do exactly to renew it?
You would refile a petition asking before the expiration date.
Before the five years is up, yeah.
At the very end, you file
notify them, or did they have to, I mean, if they forget?
This is something you have to do.
So the, all right, so the client has to file prior to the five years.
Yes.
And as long as they file before that five-year period, then they should be okay.
So long as there's been no violations.
Violations, okay.
And a violation would be that they are renting the apartment on the open market.
Correct.
That it's causing a nuisance in the neighborhood.
So the refiling is just, how would they go about doing that?
The same way you filed this petition, okay?
So do you, are the ZBA at all, or just you file with?
File with the town clerk for a renewal of a special permit.
All right. It is, I mean, that's pretty much, it's a five-year from the moment that this process here is on record with the Registry of Deeds, is when it starts, the five years.
Well, I think there is a little haziness there. It has to be after the 20 days has transpired. So I would say, in the case of an in-law apartment, unless you have angered your neighbors or done something illegal in that apartment, you would probably not find someone knocking on your door if you were a day late.
Okay.
But I can't guarantee that.
Understood.
Okay, folks, and thank you, Jim, for picking up on that, because I should have mentioned that. It's not sufficient to just say, you know, all the stipulations in the bylaw, even though that is a stipulation. I'll entertain, we took, we have, we took our vote, and I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Moved.
Danny's in a tunnel. Okay, there's a motion, a second, and I'll take a roll call. Jim Roya?
Aye.
Pat Jackson? Jenny Batlett? Jenny Zakatinsky? I think she's asleep. Keith, Suzie?
I'm an aye, Jenny.
Okay, and Jenny's an aye, and I'm an aye, so you have a unanimous vote. Thank you for your patience, folks.
Thank you for your time. Have a good night, all.
Good night now.
Good night.
Okay, we have minutes to do, do we?
We do, but I need a brief bathroom break.
Oh, okay. Anyone object?
No.
I'll be right back to, Ben. I'll be right back too, Ben.
Do we want to pause the meeting or?
I think Mike went out also.
We're just waiting for Lynn to come back, right?
Yes.
I am at my daughter's house and I have a little Dick Tracy here. Um, Mr. Royer. Would you care to look in the Worcester Registry of Deeds? The twenty-one A Water Street. That is the Curtis property. In Westboro.
You know, he.
That was sold today.
Oh. Oh.
Oh, my gosh, unbelievable. Now, he said initially that it was residential. I think when you asked him, Pat.
It is when you take a look at it, there's a house on it.
Uh oh.
Oh.
He told us it was be a land.
Oh, then he said commercial later on. There were so many inconsistencies. And it is a res- residential property. Did you hear that?
What are we? The meeting is still rolling here, right, guys?
Yes.
Oh.
Is it? Whoops.
Yes, the meeting is not being adjourned.
Yeah, well, that's fine. I think we can still talk about this because we've already reached a decision. Yeah. I think it's interesting to take a look. It is a bit a beer lot. It doesn't have a house on it. It's just.
Oh, okay.
Very close to another house. But it's listed as being sold today.
In the zoning, does it?
I just, Jim is very good at looking these things up, so I have a feeling he's looking it up and he can give us a.
Okay.
Better answer to it, but that was interesting. Okay, we have minutes, do we?
Yes, minutes of November eighth.
I'll entertain a motion for someone that was present.
So moved.
Is there a second, please?
Seconded.
Um, any discussion? If not, I'll take a roll call. Jim?
Aye.
Uh Pat, I don't think you were here.
I were, I was not.
Okay, Danny.
Hi, hi.
Jenny?
Aye.
Keith?
Hi.
And I'm an aye. Okay. Let's see here, what's next? What did I do with mine?
Um, next is sign.
Here it is. Yes. Um, do we have anything to be made aware of, Jenny, as far as paying bills go?
Well, I submitted a. Want to request. Level funded.
At what, five hundred dollars or six hundred dollars?
I believe it's five, five.
It's five, five, five. Okay. Well, thank you for doing that for us, Danny. Okay, um, one of the other things I wanted to mention to you folks. Was have you taken a look at any of what CPTC is offering in the way of. Remote um. Learning. Opportunities. There's one tomorrow night that I would like to have gone to, but I can't. Um, and I think the registration for it closed. I think they said it closes forty-eight hours. Um, before the uh event. Has anyone taken a look at them? I had a list of them here. I printed it off. Hold on one second. Here we go. I think it's right here. Um, because there were a couple that I thought would be pretty helpful to us. Uh, here they are. Okay, so. Tomorrow night is um writing reasonable and defensible decisions. And then. Um, on. What's the date here? Monday, December eighteen. They have site plan review. And then. There are others, but like planning a community sport, but zoning with overlay districts. I thought, Jim, you might take a special interest in that one.
I did, I did.
Oh, you signed up for it?
No. I just, I just took an interest in it.
Oh, I'm gonna miss you when you grow up. Um, Saturday, January sixth at nine o'clock in the morning is that. Um, and it talks about overlay zoning is a popular and useful tool. And I'm sure you know that may be coming down. And then um on Tuesday, January ninth. Um, they're having adopting and revising rules and regulation for boards. So I, and actually it's being um, the lawyer is from KT Law doing this. So those were the ones that I kind of thought were interesting. But that's my communication. Does anybody else have any other?
You wanted me to remind you about the message you received um from the select. Regarding the select board approval of the ZBA appointments.
Oh, okay. I got a note from um. Chris Keith, that the request to um Dosido. Susanna and Pat was approved. And that their terms will both expire. Um, I guess they were already set to expire in twenty twenty-seven. So um they will go, it will be listed as November, but from now on, we're gonna try to do it. The select board would like to make these appointments in May. So we're gonna have them overlap. In other words, this coming May. Anyone who would be expiring or their um. Membership would be expiring in November. We'll just review them uh or re-up them for five years, starting in May. Or as of the first of the year. Which would be July first. Thank you for reminding me, Leanne.
Sure.
Does anybody else have any other communications? If not, Mr. Royer, would you like to speak to attending the um planning board meeting?
Um, I just would would mention it. Um, I did attend last night's planning board Zoom meeting. Um, part of that discussion, they got a briefing from. Uh, the Worcester County Regional Development Corporation. Uh, basically, uh, it's on what's called cottage housing. Uh, which to me seems an awful lot like the current eco-village that we have here in town. Um, a little bit different style housing units, but basically small. Under twelve hundred square foot housing units, typically one and two bedroom. And it would be a sort of a cluster development where they would um overlay an existing. Residential area and uh the way they described it is it would essentially. Cut the zoning requirement in half for, currently you require two acres to build a residential. Property in town here, so they would cut that in half and you'd only have to have one acre per unit, but it would allow them to build. So for example, if you had twelve acres, you could build twelve cottages. And but you could put them all on like one acre. And they would have the rest of the property as common use property, so there's a lot of requirements to go with it. Uh, people have to be given. X number of square feet of private use land around their cottage. Um, and then there's common use land. Uh, one of the questions I raised was about the uh water and sewer. Uh, after we ran into the problems with South Street there. Uh, with that development where, you know, we had twelve houses on six acres. Um, and then we ran into problems where, you know, there was questions about public water supply versus private water supply and whatnot. Um, and they couldn't really address that, but um they took it back as a, an action item for them to look at themselves. But it was a, an interesting idea, but. I don't know whether it's gonna come to fruition in Berlin or not. They're proposing that we. Um, that the zoning board, or not the zoning, the the planning board. Put forth a proposal to the town to adopt. Uh, several-page amendment that would have to go into the zoning bylaw to allow this overlay district. For uh cottage housing. So whether that'll happen or not, I don't know. Uh, I certainly wouldn't anticipate it to be anytime soon. Um, it might come up if we have a fall town meeting next year. Um, I doubt it'll make it for the spring one. But if, you know, an interesting concept. Whether it pans out here in town, I don't know. I don't know where they would even attempt to try to build something like that here in town. Um, would have to have a pretty big. Uh, lot to start with. Um, so I mean, essentially you're talking about, again, one of these large farm lots that uh. Somebody would have to be willing to to sell off and divide up and uh turn that into residential units.
Was the sand pit down on River Road mentioned and did they mention anything about an overlay for that one?
Um, that wasn't part of that discussion. I think there's a. Possibly a separate issue going on with that. Um, I know there was another discussion. Um, with Dave Rhodes. Uh, as far as putting in some sort of another development that he was kind of looking at. Um, I got the impression that he was looking at it at the request of the planning board. Um, but the, that um. Whole boundless adventure thing, when they put that in, there was a deal there where the town got some land. Um, and there's a a public water supply well up there somewhere. On that land, and this would all tap into that land and that well. Um, so I think that's in that neighborhood, but um.
Well, from what I saw from the meeting before, I went to the one before this one.
Hmm.
And Mark Rhodes was there and had his proposal. And down in that sand pit, he's looking to put in another. Thirty-eight to forty-five units. Um, of housing. And they were talking about. For this coming town meeting in May, because they'd have to hustle to get it in there. Creating an overlay district that would allow the planning board to do this sort of a thing. So I was curious if they, if they mentioned that at all when you were there.
Um, there was a lot of discussion about with Mark about the, you know, the cost of it. I think he. What he currently is working with is a proposal that has forty-four housing units. Um, but he kind of intimated that that wasn't really something that um. He could make money on. Um, but he uh had indicated to the planning board that he needed to go to the bank. And talk to his banking folks and figure out. Uh, with interest rates where they are right now and everything else, what it would actually cost him to to try to. Buy the materials and and go into phases to build something like that as a forty-four unit type setup. Um, but. The impression I got was that he didn't see it as fist, as financially viable at the moment. Um, now, whether that changes or somebody comes up with a a stroke of genius plan to to modify that somehow. Um, and suddenly make it work and be feasible or not, it's another story.
Was there anyone there talking about the school census? At the previous meeting, there was some concern. That the preschool and kindergarten and first grade are pretty much at maximum. Although the upper grades aren't there yet. So I think Ellie was gonna come in and let them know what the census was like. Did they mention that?
Yep, they discussed it. Uh, they brought in a chart that showed the number of students in each. But they had it broken down by grade. Um. My understanding is, from what I got from that, um, so for example. Uh, there's, you know, thirty-two kids in fourth grade. But that's split between two classes, so you have sixteen, two classes of sixteen each at the, at the Berlin Memorial. Um, but there was a lot of discussion about. You know, getting somebody from the school board to actually come and talk to them about the school census and figuring out. Um, how that impacts Tohato and. Um, apparently Tohato can, has a lot more capacity that's available. Um, but then there's also a lot of discussion about how many people, how many kids this housing thing would actually generate. Um, so that's all being considered. I don't know that it's, um, they haven't come up with a a solid answer on that.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else have anything?
Just a question, Lynn. This is a land that they originally tried to switch with Mark for South Street, correct?
I believe so.
Okay, but he didn't want.
Right, so why does the town keep going to a developer to put in? Is there some sort of contest for whatever town that can have the most houses in the short period of time? What? What's motivating?
I think one of the concerns is that there isn't enough small housing. That there are several people, probably in my age range, that would like to downsize. But there is no place to downsize to. I have the same concern you do, Keith. I think we've grown and we've grown fairly rapidly. I mean, you know, with the apartments and everything that have gone in. And I think you need to be careful. The whole character of the town can change.
Uh huh.
I saw it happen in Framingham. When you have a bunch of rental people. Um, their interests are different than those that maybe grew up in the town.
Yep.
Or and our property owners, you know, so.
Well, have any of these recent developments that we've had, have any of the houses sold for under seven hundred fifty thousand dollars?
Not that I'm aware of.
I mean, those new ones on South Street, what are those selling for? That Mark just put in those twelve units?
Those were all in the mid-seven hundreds. Oh, well, there was.
One, five or something? That's the low one, right?
Yeah, there was a couple of uh.
Half a million.
The the affordable units. And then I think the actual South Street ones, I think those were in the. In the lower 600,000 range when. He's, but he's pre-sold all those, I think.
I mean, when you were saying there's no place to downsize, I mean, there's all the. Different villages, Eco Village and. Sawyer Village and so on and and the apartments and the 55 are older and like. How much? We're a tiny town.
Leanne.
Sorry.
Yeah, from what I've heard through the grapevine, it's people looking to own a home, a small home. And not an apartment or a condo association or a community living. It's people who want to downsize but to their own. Almost tiny home.
So you eliminate the two acre zoning and put them in the cluster. Which would be, oh.
Or was it one acre?
We. One acre.
Yeah, I just want to let you know that my battery is dying and my my charger does not seem to be working, so if you lose me, that's the reason why.
Not the boring conversation, huh? Actually, can we, are we? Should we close the meeting anyways? Can we adjourn or?
Yeah, we are still adjourned. We have adjourned.
I'll entertain a motion. Before we lose Ginny, she's gonna go to sleep shortly.
Yeah. Okay, motion to adjourn the meeting. I'm sorry, Keith, I didn't mean to cut in.
We'll let Keith second, okay? Seconded. Any discussion? If not. Jim?
Aye.
Aye.
Danny? Ginny? Keith and I'm an aye, so it's unanimous. Okay, we're adjourned.